Upheaval on three of the panels that caused a larger crack. I took, I went out there and walked, Mark Jackson and I spent probably an hour and a half walking all over the dam and looking at the data that we have. And uh, he was less concerned about those because there's that footing at the base of the dam that's twelve inches thick and four feet deep and nothing is going to get past that. The one area that we are all concerned about is a void that's in the still, is in the spillway and we're getting that, we're going to get that addressed. Our ultimate goal is to get everything stable and safe so that we can reopen the, the roadway. We're going to take the dam down. We've met with three different companies to uh, look at ways of, of addressing the voids. Uh, there's been the flowable grout, there's been foam, there's been uh, this stabilized sand type of flowable grout and uh epoxy or foam. And another term, flowable soil, which is basically stabilized sand. We saw a sample of that today and um, we're waiting to get proposals back from those companies. Once we get those proposals back and we have numbers, we'll call for another workshop. We'll sit down and we'll figure out how we move forward from here. The good news is we're approaching the end of the year. We do have monies in the budget to be able to begin work on the dam. And as we move into next year, we'll be able to budget for continuing to work into the next fiscal year. This is going to have to be broken down over time, but this is not, it's not near as severe as the engineering company had us believe. So, we're kind of on our own here at this point. The engineering company doesn't want to commit to anything because they, they have to use their stamp and their signatures and certify everything and there's, there's too many unknowns for them under the surface of the, of the dam. One of the, it was packed down with sheep's foot rollers and vibrator rollers. The compaction tests were done, the results have been recorded. We don't have any of that data. I discovered today that IPOA has a list of files that we're going to try to get our hands on that has all of the data going back to the beginning of time. So anyway, that's, that's it in a nutshell. Uh, it's a big important part of our everyday life and uh, we're doing everything we can to get it resolved as quickly as possible. The valve is going to remain open. We're going to continue to lower the lake, but it should be fine for this Memorial Weekend for people to be able to take their boats out and enjoy their watercraft. On another note, I had a meeting with uh, Joe Blackshire, our county commissioner and Martin Gonzalez, our text dot engineer that's managing this, this new hurricane through fair evacuation route. And we talked about total road because there were a thousand people roughly stranded two separate occasions within a four week period. They were not able to get out. Text dot said that this is an emergency and he thinks he has the money in his budget to be able to, without much ado, rebuild that bridge on total road, raise it and widen it to two lanes. Joe Blackshire said if he does that, he'll come and finish that road from the gate all the way to the highway in Hillister. And he's going to ask the owners of the property just south of the current intersection, if he can, if they will donate land or he'll buy it to shift the intersection a bit south so that it becomes a more traditional intersection instead of an offset intersection. In the course of that conversation, uh, Will threw out, you know, that uh, we have money left in the bond fund. We could take that money, it wouldn't be, David Marshall and I spoke about that. It's probably twenty thousand dollars, twenty five thousand dollars to do this. But pave Camelot from Durwood to the back gate. So we would have a very, a very, the plan is to have a very clean, well-made road to a safe intersection to give us another way out of the city. In addition to that, we're working on Sir Henry and Mill Creek. If that part of the road had been done, everybody on the peninsula would have had an easy way out, another way out. So that's still in the works and we're still moving forward. The weather has just uh, caused the work to come to a standstill. Twenty second street is beginning. Twenty eighth street is done, as much as they're gonna. And that's, that's it there are. In the next six weeks, uh, Judge Powers called me this afternoon and asked if he could use the community center. Our FEMA wants to use the community center. For about six weeks, I'm going to have to give him the calendar to show what days the community center is being used for other things. They're going to be setting up for anybody in the county that had flood damage to come in and sit down. FEMA will be here to talk to them and in some cases, write checks on the spot to compensate people or, or help them get through whatever the issues were that they've had so far. So, that's a good thing. It'll be close to home for us. We're kind of in the center. And uh, we did have our share of, of, of problems. I know of at least two houses that got flooded three times over the past four weeks and it's, it's just, uh, it's devastating. There's a, Small Business Administration is offering low interest loans. Oh, also, uh, Carolyn and I had talked to Mr. Setlocker, our emergency management officer. And uh, we are able to use their, their Genesis system where they give out a broad phone call or text telling you what's going on or where there's an emergency or whatever. We're able to, to, to use that. And it, I, I have at one time sent out a message or, or an email or, and, and they took that verbatim and broadcasted that out through the Genesis system. So that's, that's a good thing. We've talked about other ways of doing it, but this is something that's already in place and it does not cost us anything. And uh, that's, that's more good news. I know that's a lot. I'm done. Can I have a report from the police department? Ms. Williams, if you please. I wish it had been broadcasting. That was a lot of information. Huh? Oh, okay. Okay, that's good. No running, no running. Okay, police activity. Calls for service in March for sixty-six, that makes two hundred and eighty-three year to date. Traffic stops, eighty-eight, that's three hundred and thirty-nine year to date. Citations, fifty-six, that's one eighty-one year to date. Warnings, thirty-eight, it's a hundred and ninety-eight year to date. Two arrests, eight code enforcement actions and six agency assists. I'm uh, most pleased with the agency assists. We did not have that in the past. I don't want to steal any of Steve's thunder, but today, he recovered thirty thousand dollars worth of stolen merchandise from a local resident. That's, uh, a man has been put under arrest. He's in Oklahoma. And we're going to be driving up to Oklahoma to bring him back along with the stolen merchandise. I can't tell you how proud I am of these guys and, and what a difference they're making. In addition to that, we thought that we had the green light to exercise our rights with the extraterritorial jurisdiction. We were shut down by the, the DA. And um, I, I'm, I'm not happy about that, but you know, you can't fight City Hall. The issue is that we don't own property on the other side of Highway sixty-nine. And the city boundary does not touch sixty-nine. There's a right of way in between and we can only, we can, we can patrol and issue tickets to slow people down on sixty-nine. But those citations would have to go to the JP Court. And that would cost the city money in having our, our officers have to go to Woodville to attend uh, the court and the revenue would then go to the county and not the city. It's not about revenue, it's about safety, but it's also dollars and cents. We can't afford to have our police officers out patrolling, risking their lives and then have to go to to a ju- justice court and, and be away from working for our safety and collecting stolen goods. Municipal court activity last month, they collected twenty-six-hundred sixty-one dollars. The total went to the city was fourteen fifteen. And the, the total that went to the state was twelve-hundred forty-five dollars. So the state gets roughly half of everything that, that comes in. So now we're up to Brother Marshall.
Heidi.
Hey.
Still on?
Yeah.
You okay Lloyd?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm hearing everything.
It's not what Helene said.
I know. No, that's obvious.
All right, quiet.
Just to bring everybody up to date. In the last forty-three days, we have initiated forty-two work orders due to the past flooding situations. Those work orders are pertaining to potholes, street cave-ins, washouts, fallen trees, floating culverts, that's a new one. Uh, impassable roads, quad covered, culverts, debris in the ditches, and it's just to name a few. We've got several roads that are still impassable out there that we're working on. Out of those forty-two work orders, we have completed twenty-two. Fifteen are still pending, four are in progress. And uh, we have one scheduled. We'll have more scheduled next week. That's just what was left. So, we're moving forward with that. I know it seems slow go, but it's just a hell of a lot of work.
You had to do some of it twice.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. That, that didn't help matters.
Yeah.
But we, we're on it as fast as we can. We're getting the, the worst ones first, trying to get everybody access to their homes. Some people did not have it, no way they could have gotten there. And uh, we'll, we'll plan out from there and, and do more and more. Did we get back to where we were?
So, Judge Mil- uh, Powers called me this afternoon and I asked him if we were closer to the threshold for getting FEMA support. And he said we're very close to hitting that threshold. That's what, one of the reasons that FEMA is wanting to come and use our, our community center to help people submit their damages, their damage claims.
Unfortunately, most of what happened the second time was the same as what happened the first. It just made it a little worse than what we had fixed.
Yeah.
To get back out. There are some areas that we can add to it, but just not that much more. But we will certainly add everything that we can to try and reach a threshold.
So anybody, anybody that's, that's out there listening and, and watching, if you had any damage from the, the recent rain events, and there were three of them, please plan to, to attend these FEMA meetings, to talk to these people and record your damages on that iStat app.
The what app?
iStat. You can find it on the, on their webpage. It's on ours as well. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, you're fine. On the construction front, uh, because we're still having to do that while all this other is going on to where we can keep them on track and do what we promised we would do. There's four areas, regions. Region one, we have three culverts left to install. Region two, we have zero, we're done with that. Region three, we have six left to install. That's all pretty much on one road out here, which is uh, Charmaine East. And in region four, we haven't began yet, but we've got fifteen culverts to put in there.
So is that the, the, what's left of the original seventy?
It was seventy, I can't remember what, but after we got out there with the engineers, they lowered it quite a bit. But to date, we have twenty-seven done, completed, ready to roll. And uh, twenty-four left to do, so that's a total of fifty-one culverts. So we're, we're a little more than halfway through. Like I said, the weather is not helping us. Of course, it's not helping them either, but we're, we're getting there.
David with a culvert on uh, on Fourteenth Street today. And I guess that one wasn't part of the, that's just the city having to do that one, right?
No, that's part of the construction, that's part of the plan. Yeah, part of the engineering, but we've got two of them over there. One of the four fifteenth where it meets Fourteenth and then the other one on the other side.
You, you might want to touch base on Sherwood Forest Drive West and the issues that we had there.
The cave-in?
Yes, sir.
We had an area that uh, was brought to our attention by a citizen. Left that way and a few minutes later came back and there was a hole in the road. Probably ten by ten.
Yeah, big.
And it was down about five to six feet at that time. There was a water line. We, we, we did some research. It was an active line. However, we ended up making a phone call to Southwest Water.
Yeah.
It's, it's now Texas, the water company. And uh, got a hook of Mr. Bo Smith, who is a resident out here and he is in charge of this area, so he was very helpful. And after several days, they couldn't find a leak either. When it ended up being.
What did all, what all did they do?
They, they cut off valves, they ran chlorine tests, uh, they tried to trace it down as best they could. And anything that they did, made no difference. We uh, we let it go for a little bit because that's about the time the next one came in. And uh, I think the general consensus is out here, if you've lived out here for long, there are a lot of springs. Most of the time, I would say ninety-five to ninety-nine percent of them are inactive. But when that aquifer underneath comes up, they will, they will become very active. Uh, I believe that's what happened. They suggested that with their crew. They have been through this before out here. And uh, I had to agree with them because about a week, week and a half later, no more water, water quit running.
It was magic.
Yeah, yeah. We packed some material in it, but it was still a little too damp, so we're going to wait for that to harden up. And we'll come back in, bring it back up and then we can. But that, that spring thing happened quite a bit during this last bout of rain that we had. Not that uncommon when it rains this much. On the dams, we ready to move on to that?
Yes, sir.
Y'all covered most of it?
I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
Oh, please do. I'm better. We uh, we're gonna open the valve at Galahad here sometime next week, only for about five minutes to uh, to kind of blast that pipe out. What's been sucked in there or anything else, but we want to make sure that it's a hundred percent operable if indeed we need it.
You might be able to find those keys.
No, that was Tristan.
Oh.
Yeah, that was Tristan. One, one of my crew decided to do what he was told or asked to do. They were cleaning off the, the inlet grill, which you're, you're aware of. And uh, they, we've made a, uh, an improvement on the deck. We've cut a section out where you can remove that, you don't have to lean over anymore, get right to it. Problem was, they were clipped to his belt or to his belt loop. And when he went to move, they got caught and then boop, right down the hole. I'm sure they shot about fifty feet out the pipe into the leg. So we're gonna have to do some more keys so he can get in and out of the water. Yeah, but, but it happens. It, it happens. Other than that, we're, we're doing our, our routine. You asked me today, are we still doing the dam reports? Yes, we are. Except for Charmaine and I have left it off of there for obvious reasons. We do have some work to do on Galahad. And that is during the water or the flood, when the water was rushing over it, it picked up some of the talking and just kind of bent it back. And now every time it rains, everybody calls up, says the dam is leaking because it's shooting out. It's hitting in the talking and shooting out. We're fine. Uh, there's a little strip on the road that also, uh, we need to get over there. We have material to do that one with and take care of that. Other than that, they both seem to be in, in great operable shape. We just need to do the, the routine general maintenance on, on some of the flat forms and things like that, just keep it working on. Okay?
Yes, sir.
On another note.
Oops.
In twenty eighteen, July, we began working with the I-Works program and using that. For those of you that are not familiar with it, it's a heck of a good system for us and I think for the city, for permits, everything. Keeps a, a running record from whenever it started. Uh, in my instances, it gives me the date, the address, who called it in, their contact information, which one of my guys did what, what piece of equipment, exactly how much fill they used, concrete, limestone or whatever. It gives us a dollar amount of what we've spent. It's, it's, it's a good system and it's working really, really well. We did that in twenty eighteen, July. Okay. May twenty twenty-four. Five years and ten months later, after we put the first one in for, for the road crew as zero one, we uh, we passed a milestone today. We are at one thousand and one work orders here.
Woo-hoo!
That's a big milestone. I had always said and promised myself that when we hit a thousand, it was time for me to retire. Well, the hell with that, we got too much to do. So you're probably going to have to put up with it for another thousand work orders if that's okay with you.
That's fine with me.
Hopefully it won't take five years and ten more. But if you get there, I don't think I could do them. But uh, that, that, that was a big day for us. I never thought that when we started that in twenty eighteen, we could see a thousand work orders.
We need to have another pizza party.
Sounds good to me.
We uh, we did that when you had, when you got to where you had zero work orders active on the books. Now you've hit this other one, pizza's on me.
Good deal. We can take care of that next week when we hopefully bring our demand on hold.
We'll be talking about that. We'll be talking about that.
Okay. Other than that, unless you guys have some questions, ladies have some questions.
One question.
Go ahead.
How's material holding up? Are you having to make it, are you having to buy any new material for some of these repairs or?
Yes, yes, but we're still, I think, well within budget.
So we're keeping, uh, because the material that we had on hand was wet, we're having to buy additional materials to bring in that's dry. And we're keeping that, those dollars separate. What? Oh, so it's, we're, we're keeping all those invoices separate to be able to turn into FEMA for reimbursement. And that's what we're doing with I-Works. We're keeping up with the, the number of hours on the machine, the number of labor hours that are being used as well as the raw materials that are being used specifically for disaster recovery.
Well, they've been very efficient in the year. I mean, when we were looking over the budgets and where they were, I mean, we, I, I saw they were way under on some of the material costs. So I was wondering if that's gonna change in the last part of the year here.
Well, what, at the end of last year, we re- approached the end of the year and we had a surplus of dollars and David was instructed to go out and spend that and bring material in and stockpile it. Because the only thing that would happen is that it would go up in price. So we hedged our bets a little bit and that's what's happening. Also, as, as we pave more roads, David and I have talked, uh, we're going to use less or have less need for the raw materials that we've been, been having to buy.
I just think that's an opportunity as we look for dam and costs and money that we need.
Oh yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I've been watching that.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
I just didn't know if you were going to eat up a lot of that surplus, but new material because of all the floods or if that might be an opportunity for us to have some money to spend on dams.
It should get better as the year goes on. Our, our other source at this point that saves us a lot of money is unable to get to it at this point. That should clear up in another four weeks. And if so, then we can cut our, our, our bill that we usually get by uh, two-thirds.
So we're, we're hopefully get some FEMA money reimbursement as well.
That's just an opportunity for us.
Yeah, absolutely, sure.
Cost to come on that. That's one of the big areas I saw where we were way under budget. They've been doing a great job. And I just, you know, I didn't know if we were eating some of that up because of the floods or not, so.
Thank you. I appreciate you looking into that and, and monitoring it.
I think last year we had a surplus of about twenty-three thousand and.
You're running ahead of that this year.
Yeah, we went ahead and got what we needed because of that. I think we're running well ahead this year, so.
Or behind.
Behind, whatever.
Whichever way you want to look at it.
We're looking good, one way or the other. Okay, anything else?
Thanks, David.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Do you want to add anything to about the dams? Okay. Moving right along, Ms. Williams. Howdy.
Hello. PNZ meeting, they are still investigating the bed and breakfast, or Airbnbs and Ver- Verbos. They are going to make a list if, with the name, the best contact information and the rental location. Is there anything the council would like to add to this list so that we know where our short-term rentals are?
So, what we, what we, what we need is the, the uh, the owner's name, contact information.
And where it's located.
And where it's located, yes.
No other information at this time is needed.
I don't, I don't, I don't think so. The, the main thing is just being able to know where they are and, and having the police department know in the event that there's an issue with a non-resident and the way to get in touch with the homeowner.
I think you might want to ask whether they're listed on multiple.
If, if I may interrupt.
If they're on multiple.
Of course, my, my sites.
Yeah, we encountered that there on.
If, if I may point out that the topic being discussed currently is not on the agenda and we shouldn't be discussing it.
That is a report from the planning and zoning. The second thing is the ordinance.
Okay, well, I, I only see the, the, the A, so.
The report from planning and zoning. This is what they're moving.
Yeah, that's her, she's, she's okay.
Alright, so the actual ordinance brought before it is this, from last time as well, it is the permit for any additional things. So it says, whereas existing ordinances do not require site plans that include electric, water and septic location and whereas the city council has found it to be in the best interest of city residents to confirm that there is no utility conflicts and lot size sufficient to accommodate intended construction outlined in the permit. Basically, people are building houses before they build the septic and then there's no room for the septic. So, some additions and changes were made. So some additions and changes were made and they're very minimal. Says permits are required for new roof or roof replacement, install of concrete slabs or other permanent structures. Dimensions of drawings and placement of, or proposed placement of all structures of utilities must be provided. A TCEQ inspection of the property is required with the permit to assure compliance with current city codes and determine that lot size can accommodate all existing proposed construction, including distances from property line and easements.
So that's the main change, is that we're having TCEQ have the design of the septic system to make sure that the lot can accommodate whatever size house is going to be built on it.
Yes, sir.
Bottom line.
Bottom line, we need to make sure that the septic can handle the house.
So that's what we've been doing, but now this is an ordinance that we can put in place. So can I get a motion to accept, or is there a discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If my hearing is right, that if you're gonna replace carpet in your house, you're gonna have to have a permit?
No, sir.
That's more of a carport outside permanent structures.
Carport, okay.
Yes, sir.
I was gonna say, oh, you know.
Yeah, we're not that far into it, sir.
Hey, I'm glad you paid attention.
So.
Yeah, well, I thought, and I might, because I haven't had time to read any of this stuff up. But if you don't make a structural change to your house or your garage or whatever, it doesn't, you won't require a permit if there's no structural change.
No, you're correct. You're correct with that. All this is, we were sitting around in the office one day when David Harrington was getting permits for something. And he looked at me and he said, you know, we're doing this backwards. We're getting building permits and we don't know if the lot size will accommodate a septic system the size of the house that we're building. And I was like, bing, you know, the light bulb went off. It was a revelation. So we immediately started asking people to have the TCEQ rep and the licensed installer design the system to kind of back into the maximum number of square feet that it could support based on the size of the lot. So that's what this is all about.
Yeah, well, and that's fine. Actually, that needed to be done.
Yes, sir.
So, but I just, when I heard it, I heard that, man, if you don't change the structural.
No, that's, yeah.
But you do need a permit for a new roof.
Yes, sir.
I have a disagree with that.
Okay, with the new roof aspect?
Yeah, because if I have to have a roof replacement, I have to come down and get a permit? That's a long reach of the city government.
So not all permits require a fee. We just, the original statement was, it just needs to know that it's going on. But if you disagree, I can send it back to them.
I'd like to send that one back because if I have to have to do a roof replacement, I don't think I have to come ask the city for a permit to have that roof replaced.
Yeah, not just changing the structure of your building.
If you change it.
Fixing something that needs to be fixed, it's no different than if a window breaks and you put a window right back in. That's not a structural change. And I think it's important not to keep adding different.
I believe that one was part of the original, but I will take it back to PNC.
Or just people have to do whether they want to or not.
Well, the only change that's been made has been the addition of the septic system. That's the only change that was made.
Roof replacement, well, and the other.
Yes.
And had I known that, or whenever it was put in, then I would disagree with that at that point in time. But now that we have it in front of us, I think we need to reach back a little bit on that one.
Okay.
On that roof.
We could either do that or, you know, approve this change and then have them come back with, you know, look at removing that or whatever. I think that the importance of the septic system placement is much more important than whether or not you have to get a permit for your roof.
I agree with that.
So we can make a motion, if you allow me to, I can make a motion.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that in 152, 111, permit required versus permit required for all new construction and additions within the city, that we change point A to read permits are also required for a new roof, comma, installation of any concrete slab or any other permanent structure. And we take out the roof replacement as part of that. A in the thing. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
To leave roof and take out roof replacement?
Yes, leave new roof, because if you make a new roof, you certainly want to, I think, get structural things that could be changed.
Okay.
Take roof replacement off and then have the permit go through it that way. That's my motion.
I'll second that.
I agree.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, now we can, with this, now we've got a remended thing. Now we can make a motion and decide to accept this with that amendment.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
In my understanding, if we've done this. So now we can make first and a second with that change accepted. So I'm making a motion that we accept the ordinance as amended.
As amended.
I'll second.
I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Report from Tyler County Appraisal District.
Meeting was canceled. Nothing to report.
Okay, sir.
I'm Joe.
Just what's your thought, what's the organizational structure like within that? There's a lot of changes, it seems like, at meeting times.
Can I get a mic?
Here.
Okay, so the organizational structure is absolutely impeccable. The reason this meeting was canceled is the chief appraiser actually had COVID. And it's obviously, you know, the Tyler County Tax Appraisal Board. So the busiest time is during tax season, during protests and things of that nature. The rest of the season, I was even given ample warning that chances are I'm probably going to get bored because until tax season, there really isn't a lot going on, so.
So right now, they are setting taxes. There are a lot of reviews and all going on right now, right till the end of May? Or is it most of that already done in Tyler County?
Most of it is already done, but, I mean, there might be, I forget the exact deadline as far as protests and such. But another thing to consider, and this is mainly for the residents, a lot of residents are under the impression that the tax board is the one raising the taxes. That's not the case. The situation is if Austin feels that the tax appraisal board's appraisals are too low, Austin will increase them. They have their mechanism in place to get to a certain point. Right now, the tax appraisal board, specifically the chief appraiser, is actually going to bat trying to avoid unnecessary increases. But of course, with him having COVID, there's not a lot that he's doing at this time. It's my understanding that he is getting better, but he's not back in the saddle yet. So, like I said, you know, meeting was canceled, so I didn't really get any updates on that front. I can make some calls to get a better answer to your question, but at this time, that's what I have.
Thanks for your, but I'm just trying to get a feel for how it works in Tyler County. I mean, I've been involved with appraisal boards before and I'm just curious how it works and how your, any of your things. So I'm just asking questions to try to get a better feel for it.
Yeah, I'll be glad to get with you after the meeting so that we don't draw out the agenda.
Appreciate it.
You bet.
Consider for discussion the action to take and move insurance money from line 6080 to 6075 dot oh five. That's moving the money from insurance to the vehicle for repair. So the budget was adopted with $5,000 in the line item for vehicle repairs, whereas the cost of unforeseen vehicle expense exceeds the budget line item. And whereas the city has available funds on deposit to cover additional expense, now therefore being adopted or ordained by the city council to amend the budget to increase the line item for vehicle repair to $11,000, giving a total for vehicle repairs for that line item of $16,000. Do I have a motion to move that money from one line to another?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
What was the major reason for that repair? What drove that number up?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know why this one is, I feel like it's very quiet. Okay, so the main reason that the number got driven up was whenever we had to do the replacement with Steve's truck or with Bob's truck for Steve, the towing cost, which we did, we got reimbursed for the majority of what it cost, but it was directly coming out of that budget line item. And since you can't reimburse that line item with the reimbursements that we got from TML, it was just driving that line item further and further down. It was.
So the reimbursements went into the general fund. There's really a lot of moving parts when you start talking about vehicles right now. You've got the purchase, you've got the loss, you've got insurance payments.
Yes, there's, I mean, the decommission, the commission.
I had a feeling that was from the.
Yes, there's the decommission and the upfitting of his new vehicle. I mean, all of that's gone into there and they only had $5,000 to begin with. That's really not a lot for vehicle maintenance.
But we got reimbursed and it went to the general fund.
It went into, yes, we created a new line item, I believe it was last month, insurance proceeds. And that's where all the money's going. Now, there's some legalities that I have to work out. We might be able to fix the budget to where, you know, it's, but I'm not sure yet because it's so big on interpretation. I have to get with the attorneys to see how they do things. So without getting too further, too much into detail with that, there might be some adjustments coming up, maybe. But right now, I'm just trying to get them the money that they need to continue on because the maintenance, I mean, tires and oil changes are expensive.
Because when we discussed it, we were gonna come out ahead with.
And technically, technically.
But it went to the general fund.
Technically, we are.
That's the piece that was missing.
Yeah, technically.
We got reimbursed, but in general fund.
Right, the money's there, it's just I can't put, I can't put that into that line item. Since that's an expense only, I cannot reimburse that line item. So the money's there, it's just not in that line item.
You can't do it without us taking action.
Right, and I have to figure out what exactly kind of action we can take legally with a municipal budget.
And that's a clarification I needed.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
We're good? Okay.
Can I have your names, please?
Haley Williams.
Okay. So.
Call for vote.
I'd like to have, we have a motion and a second. Could I, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No? Motion carries. Okay. Consider for discussion action and adopt local federal procurement policies and procedures for federal grant use. This is just a formality. It's a 16-page document of terms and conditions of how we're to manage procurement of grant funds. Can I get a motion to?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Consider for discussion an adoption of the statement of financial goals and policies for federal grant use. That's another 16-page document of Ts and Cs. Can I get a motion to accept those or to, yeah, to adopt that?
I make a motion and adopt statement of financial goals and policies for federal grant use.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Ms. Williams, you're back up.
Okay, so the financial documents were sent to council on May 13th, along with the accountant's financial reports and the reconciliation details for each account. The state comptroller direct deposited $8,498 on May 10th for sales and use taxes that were collected in March and reported to the comptroller in April. Last year, the same month, we got $7,851. Last month, the sales tax deposit was $6,881. April ad valorem taxes were received May 13th. They totaled $25,897 with $21,308 going to maintenance and operations and $4,589 for the interest and sinking fund. The calculated balance of delinquent taxes stands at $285,443 as of April 30th, which is the accumulated amount from 2010 to present. The calculated balance of unpaid taxes, penalties, and interest for Ivanhoe North has actually lowered this month to $5,231 from the $5,301 that has been the stagnant amount. So we got a little bit of them, not much. The total pledging in Citizen State Bank did not exceed the $250,000 FDIC limit and therefore CSP did not pledge. Our tax class interest rate remained at 5.2% roughly through another month. The accountant monthly report for March arrived May 10th and was sent out on the 13th. After review, totals for the various department budgets were correct. The bank statements have been reconciled and I do believe that the April financials can be approved.
Do I have a motion to approve the financials for April?
I still make that motion, mayor.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Okay, we need to go into executive session for just a quickie. We won't be gone long. We adjourn.